Welcome, everybody. Good afternoon. We are going to kick off this afternoon's work session with some poetry. And before we get started, I have a proclamation to present. I'm not going to read the whole thing. I read it earlier in the month for National Poetry and Jazz Appreciation Month. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Jesse Ellsbury with the Washington County Public Schools at Barbara Ingraham School for the Arts. He's a literary arts teacher. I'm going to present this proclamation to him.
Thank you so much.
And you can please introduce your students, who will be reading some poetry for us.
My name's Mr. Ellsbury, and I'm the literary arts teacher at Barbara Ingraham School for the Arts. And thank you so much for having us. The entire department is very honored to be here. Many brilliant poets have emerged from Barbara Ingraham this year, and I'm proud to introduce two of the most talented, Kat Lynn and Shane Bach. Kat has shown an amazing ability to write rich and worthwhile poetry on almost any subject, and for this event, she's drawn on nature as inspiration. And if you look, her poem is called "New Leaves." She will read it, and then I'll introduce Mr. Bach.
I dream of leaves through the shaded gilded leaves above the dusky bark, throwing away this old day and enclosing in night's dark. A new season chill settling on bare grail branches. We become used to graying skies of gray, gazing at skies of gray. And day to day, lights begin to quietly stray as our nights turn anew, like breezes shaking, time-worn boughs making room, as Joyce Kilmer has said. I think that I shall never see a poem as lovely as a tree, so I must agree, live trees will grow new leaves.
Thank you very much. The other student is Shane Bach, and he has revised the poem he'll be sharing with you so many times with more diligence than I've seen in quite a while, and it's amazing the product he's finally come up with. His poem is called "Choices," and we would be honored to hear it.
Everything's gone, left to reside with the home I once had, with the love we once felt. For so long, we have been stuck here, in this purgatory. It may be terrible, and it may be a wasteland, and it may be destroyed, but it's the place you know and love. As much as you hate it, you can't do anything but love it. With every ounce of your being, the more you hate it, the more you love it. I still can't stand the things we put ourselves through and the choices we make and the paths that we choose. For when the two roads had diverged in the yellow wood, Robert Frost may have taken the one less traveled, but that did not make all the difference. The difference was made with the one who created the paths, the one who had made two choices. For if he had not made two paths, for if he had not made two choices, there would be no difference. Nobody would have to decide. Nothing would have to change. Everything could remain the same.
Well, once again, I want to thank Mr. Ellsbury and the rest of the students in the Barbara Ingraham School Literary Arts Department for being here. I'd like to present your teacher. We want to encourage you to keep writing, so we have some pens and pencils here that I'm going to have him distribute to you, and also a couple of City of Hagerstown mugs for the readers that you brought for us today. So, thanks again.
Thank you very much.
And thank you all for being here and sharing your work with us.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the special session, so I'd, this time, would entertain a motion to go into special session.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
And a motion by Mr. Munson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Metzner. All those in favor of going into a special session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so this special session is for the approval of an agreement, limited right of refusal with Potomac Bee Company, 4953 West Washington Street.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to approve an agreement between the City of Hagerstown and Potomac Bee Company LLC and Nathan &amp; Allison Buckman. This agreement grants limited first refusal options as outlined in the attached agreement for a portion of the property the city is intending to purchase at 4353 West Washington Street. Hagerstown, this agreement is offered in return for their waiving an existing option they have with the current owner, who is selling the property to the city.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Munson. Is there any discussion?
Uh, I do. If I could just get clarity on what appears to be option number three, the if within 36 months of subdivision, the City of Hagerstown receives an offer less than the Buckmans' purchase price as outlined above, the Buckmans will have the ability to match that offer?
That's correct. So, basically, if within three years after the city divides the property, if the city offer receives another offer for the property, less than the purchase price agreed to, the Buckmans have agreed to, then they'll have the ability to match that offer.
Just maybe for clarity, shouldn't that say, "The City of Hagerstown receives an offer that is acceptable to the city, that is less than the Buckmans' purchase price?"
And you know what, Councilman? It is in the agreement.
I'm assuming if I come in and offer you 20 grand, they come in and say, "Hey, I'll match that 20,000." And that the offer's going to have to be acceptable to us.
You're correct.
Just for clarification.
No, and in the agreement, I believe it's on page two of the, I'm sorry, top of page three.
Right.
It does say acceptable offer.
Yeah, as long as that's...
Sorry, I'm sorry, it's the very bottom of page two.
Yeah, as long as that's clarified in the motion, that that's what we're doing.
It is.
It is so clarified.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you, Mr. Sargent, the rest of the staff. I think this is a great way to maintain a retail tenant and provide for their expansion and keeping them here in the City of Hagerstown. So, thank you. So, we'll adjourn our special session and go into our work session, the first item of which is the preliminary agenda review. I would like to note one change from the consent agenda under B, contractor services, item number one, contractor services for 2013 and Power Clean Energy Communities grant to be determined. That will be moved to new business. You want to make that note. And also, I'm just going to go through the items on the consent agenda, and if anyone has any qualms or wants to move that to the new business, we can do that. We have Department of Parks and Engineering, the demolition and disposal of a vacant motel at 12 North Prospect Street.
Washington.
It appears that's not the low bidder. Am I just misreading it?
The actual low bid from Stamper is $42,517. It's a little confusing.
Okay, that's...
Then the $15,000 is to take the asbestos out, which will do...
Okay, but the 42 would be compared to the 64.
Yes, that's the answer to your question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? The second item is the permanent seating at the City Park Band Show.
Yeah, I want that moved to the new business. I will be voting against that one.
Okay. So, item number two will be moved to new business. Under Department of Utilities, number one, the contractor services, which I just mentioned, is moved to new business. Number two is the replacement of equipment for lateral camera unit number 563. Anyone, any questions about that one? Next one is Magna Flock Polymer, George S. Coin Chemical Company. Any questions on that? We have a meter-reading vehicle transceiver unit. The annual renewal of SCADA software support. Any questions on those from Department of Utilities? Under, for finance, we have the audit of fiscal years ending June 30, 2013 to June 30, 2014. Any questions on that item? And community and economic development, we have the application for permit for the Blues Prelude, May 30, 2013. The University Plaza, application for permit for Blues Fest, that'd be the Maryland Theater at the Central Parking Lot. Application permit for Blues Fest, M&amp;T Bank and the VIP area. Any questions on those? All right. So, we just have two items moving from the consent agenda then to new business, the permanent seating at the City Park Band Show, and the contractor services for the Empower Clean Energy Communities grant. Any other questions about the preliminary agenda review? Oh, I would like to remind everybody that on next Tuesday, we will be having a work session starting at 3:00 PM. We're going to receive the report from the SORA group and have a discussion on that. Also, the Ripken Report, the folks from the Ripken Group will be here to present their further analysis. And we will be taking public comments and questions at that time before our regular session begins. And I'd also like to mention that, beginning this evening, the Ripken Alternative Site Review will be available online. I believe we'll have it distributed also to the local media outlets as well, so we want to get it out for everybody's consumption before that meeting next week. Any other questions about the agenda for next week? Okay. Moving right along. We have on our agenda the Dog Park Proposal. Welcome back to the table, our city engineer.
Thank you. Well, I don't really have a lengthy presentation. I do want to recognize some members of our task force are here again with me tonight, but I just wanted to be able to answer any questions that you may have as we continue this discussion. Two weeks ago, there was a couple of things that you asked me to do. One was to try to give you a better map of some of the sites that were evaluated, and I put that in the packet. Also, I did contact Ms. Snyder at CSX, and she indicated that they would consider, possibly consider a lease. She would get back to me. I haven't heard back from her. So, I'm not really sure where they stand on that, but they didn't, they gave them two weeks, and they didn't get a decision back to me on that.
I'd like to have that communication, please, and that number.
Sure. Other than that, I just wanted to follow up with the, in the packet, there was some additional drawings of the Fairgrounds site, as the task force recommended, but also Hager Park was a plan that was brought forth about last August, and then City Park, a plan for that too. But at that, Mayor, I think I'll just turn it back over to you and see if there's any other questions that you all would have.
Well, I'll start because I looked at these, I've looked at these again and walked some of them again, and I continue to try to favor a central site that doesn't directly impact a residential neighborhood, that does not have a budding residential and is located centrally. So, I focused on the City Park site and the Hager Park site. Now, Hager Park, I think a major objection was its size, and I don't see why we can't use the portion of the lot that's between the originally proposed site and Memorial Boulevard, which would almost double the size of the park, and incorporate that into it. It's got adjacent parking, and I don't think the objections to that site are ones that can be, I think they're ones that can be overcome. I think it's an informal Little League practice field. I think we can probably find an alternative to that. Community Garden, I think we can find an alternative site for that, which would use a much smaller amount of land. City Park, I think there are things in favor of that. I think that the parking can be accommodated by re-striping Walnut. I think that there's, almost nobody parks along there. And on the downtown side, the east side, you could eliminate parking, move the center line over, and give extra parking area for people to maneuver on the park side, the western side of Walnut. As far as the floodplain, which Kristen played on and splashed in when he was younger, there was a channelization done through there in the '90s, and I walk that twice now after rains, and it hasn't been bad. Now, I'm not saying it would never get bad. I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's, I'm not sure, a lot of people walk their dogs there now. It's sort of our informal dog park, I think. So, I think those two sites have the least impact on residential neighborhoods, although, you know, I've made some consultations on, with people up on Prospect, and I think we'd have to make sure they understood that that was a possibility. But it is not directly abutting their properties, and there's an intervening property between Walnut and the Dog Park, in the park itself. There's an open space area that's, the park would actually be at lower grade. So, I think that can be made to work. I think the parking at any, at both those sites, of course, at Hager, the parking is right next to the site. At Fairgrounds, the parking is a pretty fair distance. There are residential neighborhoods on several sides, including some directly abutting, and I find that people around here will think the parking's pretty far away, I think. I think we'll wind up spending more than what's in that estimate to improve access to parking areas, because it's pretty far away when you look at it. Second of all, I don't think that fence, which is a big part of it being cheaper, is going to be tolerated by people. It's rusty, it's got old barbed wire spikes at the top, and I think we, no sooner would we open it than people would say, you know, "I don't want to walk, you know, this is intolerable," and we'd have to deal with that. And further all, it's not as centrally located as the other two sites. So, I think, you know, I'm not, Rodney, you know, I've had some preliminary talks with him, but not a formal estimate, and thinks that the Hager Park and its expansion could be done for somewhere just over $60,000. And, you know, that's, I don't want to hold him to that, because I don't think he's had sufficient time to consider it. But there's a swell through there, we'd have to overcome, you know, make a crossover with the swell. But, so my, right now, again, these are all the three top sites that the task force did good work, but for those reasons, I just think that Fairgrounds is not as centrally located. I think the cost is going to be higher than what we estimated, and I think, most of all, it's surrounded by residents who, if they don't know what's coming now, will soon find out. So, that's, you know, that's my position. I would favor further development or doing those, one of those other two sites. I think they can be made to work.
Kristen, I have a question for you. When we were doing the Fairgrounds, and really, I don't remember all of this, and the softball fields and everything else that was proposed, the Dog Park, where was the Dog Park supposed to go? And why was it not? I don't remember. I don't remember. Mm-hmm. I don't remember. No, Kristen, Kristen brought it up. Kristen brought it up.
When we, when we discussed it, it was across the path here, in this area one time. Which is near the Stormwater Management Area, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, I remember having that discussion.
Yeah, because he brought it up, and that's what kind of took me, and I thought, well, when was this ever? You know, because certainly, it has always been organized sport that has been there, and that has been always my chief complaint because of utilizing now and taking from what was for the kids.
Right.
But in talking to other people too, and I know there'll be those two that will dispute this, but to do it and to do it right, you actually need an area that's two and a half times the size of what the proposal is at Fairgrounds in order to do it right. And if you're going to not do it right, then we're going to expand. So, where are we going to expand to? Are we going to have it then that we'll have one that'll be at Fairgrounds, and then another expansion? Because honestly, the size of where it is now at Fairgrounds would probably be enough for small dogs, and that's really not giving much, okay? So, the expansion I'm seeing is over where the railroad land is at. That's the thing. And doing it, why not do it right? You know, when the people came in here, and they were at the meeting, and they were in hopes of, because they've seen it where there's been pools, and there's been this, and been that, Lou said it the other week, if we're going to do it, why don't we do it right? That, you know, it's a quick click, and then here we sit again, and how much is it going to cost? And you know, it doesn't matter where we pull the money from. At the end of the day, I'm still hearing budget and how there's no money. Okay? So, you know, I just, it's just not, the location has not been thought through that much as to see exactly what was there on that railroad ground. And to give it only just a short time and, you know, not to get response, then, you know, you've got to go to the top. And wherever the top is at, I don't know, but I'm certainly going to find out one way or the other, regardless if it goes to Fairgrounds or not. Because at one, at some time, there is going to be an expansion if there is a need. That's the bottom line. And for the life of me, I still cannot, with all of, and mostly county residents, how they have not gone to the county and how they have not sought out a Dog Park, because all they have is a run. That's it.
Penny, are you saying the park itself is not large enough, or it won't handle the number of people that will come?
No, no, it's not large enough for dogs, for dolls.
It keeps expanding in the criteria.
No, you don't want, you don't want...
I mean, we had Hager, Fairgrounds is larger than that.
No, but what I'm saying is, it still is not, I mean, people have come to me, Marty, you know, my, my whole thing is, is that this was an area that the kids that didn't pay to play sports were able to utilize that ground.
And Penny, I support you on that one.
I know that.
When I was over there Sunday afternoon, there were kids playing there.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if you're going to do it like Lou said last week, then do it right. Find a piece of ground that at least you've got enough that you know you can expand on this.
I guess I'd have to see a schematic of the railroad, because I went up there too, and I, you know, I just have to understand how...
You have to go back in the area where it's really good. I mean, you're looking at Walnut Street, which is city property. I'm talking in the railroad ground.
I know where you're talking about. I went up there and drove back the railroad right away.
Well, I went through the thickets the one time, so...
So, I did go up there.
But there's a lot of ground.
Well, I would hope that whatever decision we make about where this, the first Dog Park goes, that actually there may be successive Dog Parks after that, because I do think it is an amenity that is, is a good one to offer to our residents and certainly would be utilized. So, I do think that this, whatever decision is made about where the first Dog Park goes, I think it's just that. I think it'll be the first of, hopefully, several that we have to offer in Hagerstown, and hopefully, the Washington County will pick up the pace and also offer those kinds of amenities too.
Yeah, since they're going to be doing a new park at some point.
Other council members have an idea? So, Penny, you don't, at this point, you don't favor any of the proposed sites? Is that the way I understand it?
The only, the only site that I would, would be, would be the City Park.
Okay. Mr. Metzner?
I will favor wherever we can get two other votes for.
Mr. Munson?
I've put a lot of work into this issue, and I happen to think that every dog should have its day, and every dog owner should have their day too. I've been to all these sites, and the Fairgrounds site I've been to over and over. I went in, I talked to the neighbors in the sites, and I found people at the Fairground, and I found people who were not in favor of it, but I found lots of people who are in favor. Now, my personal belief is that I prefer the Hager Park site, but I'm not prepared to go to war with a ball club, a Little League ball club. I'm just not prepared to do that.
It shouldn't be a war, Don. I think we can find something for an informal, I'm sorry.
So, I have limited my vision at this point, after what I've looked at, to Fairground Park. However, I think there needs to be some provisions that are included to make sure this is as comfortable for the neighbors as possible. Number one, I understand that parks open at 10 o'clock at night. That means that there are going to be people taking their dogs in there at 10 o'clock at night, probably, at some point. And I think the appropriate lighting should be there that shouldn't disturb the neighborhood. And Rodney, I'm talking about those little lights that are in the other part of the park, near the parking, I think.
Or the pedestrian lights.
Yeah, pedestrian lights. Also, I'm concerned that the commitment has been made by the Dog Park Task Force, that they're willing to put up money, and I don't want us to spend any money until their money is available. It's going to cost us $40,000, it's going to cost them $20,000, and I don't want to see us put up any of our money until their money is available. I think we should move forward with building the park. They've been fairly successful so far without any advertising or without any real super effort in raising 6,000, I understand it. And so, I suspect that once this thing starts getting built, and people can see it being, dog owners can see it being built, that it will attract money pretty rapidly. I think that everything needs to be done, that can be done, to protect the people from whatever problems might be associated with this park. I've been told by a lot of dog owners that there won't be any noise, or at least not very much noise, associated with this park. I've been told that there will not be a great deal of odor associated with this park. And the one thing I, two things I did find out that I think have some bearing on this is, number one, there are a huge number of people who take their dogs to this park now. Some of the people who live near that park are my relatives, and I went and talked to them. I went and met with them, and they told me there are dogs over there all the time. And there are dogs who are doing what dogs do when they have to go to the bathroom, and that's got to be cleaned up by somebody. And there are people in our parks now, I'm told, that have to clean that up. Well, if this was more centralized, that would be less of a problem. So, for the reasons that this is going to be less costly, less intrusive, I think, and it's an idea whose time has come, I'm willing to support it with the caveats that I have pointed out.
So, just so I'm clear, you mentioned lighting that doesn't disturb the neighbors, the task force raising matching funds, essentially?
Right.
And did I hear you mention also camera, the security?
Yes, that, yes, you did. If I didn't, I meant to. I really think that's one of the very first things we need, is the security cameras.
You favor the non-asterisk items in the cost estimate?
I'm sorry, what?
You favor the non-asterisk items in the cost estimate?
I know.
I'm not saying it good or bad, I'm just saying it's, I think so too. I think you...
I think that's the very first thing we need from the money.
But I think that park is going to cost more than what they say there, again, because of the, I don't think that fence is going to survive.
I have friends who tell me that there are going to be problems with, in that park, with dogs fighting, perhaps? I don't know. But if there are, then we need to see who the owners of those dogs are so that they can't be permitted in there in the future. And the cameras are the only thing. Those cameras do not have to be watched 24 hours a day. Those cameras can be recorded and then played back, and we can see who on those, on those cameras are the dogs that are not responsibly, dogs and dog owners who are not responsibly using the park. So, I'm going to support Fairground Park. So I'm going to support Fairgrounds Park and with those caveats. And Mr. Mayor, thank you for bringing the cameras up, I do appreciate it.
Oh, and you mentioned the, the closing time, but I don't know if, did you say that that should be different or you're saying?
No, I didn't say that. I think we should have.
That was associated with the lighting.
I think we should have lights there and, I mean, there are people who work in DC at Baltimore and they get home near dark or after dark, they need to take their dogs someplace, but they have, they, they need to be lights that are not intrusive to the people who live around there.
Well, I might say, once again, we don't have that problem if we do Hager Park or City Park.
Mr. Alshar, your thoughts?
On the, the City Park schematic, you know, I, I hear the contention that, you know, you were there twice and it was generally dry. I would only note on the, the handout, there are two stream systems that parallel nearly the entire length of, of the property. And if nature teaches us anything, it's that it is not consistent in its channelization. It's going to flow and exist where it wants to exist, whenever it wants to exist.
Are you saying dogs don't like mud?
The eastern one is, is a very short branch. It starts right there and it's for half the length.
It's like a spring step.
Yeah, and the, the right-hand one is all channelized. It was channelized with the federal grant in the 90s.
I, I can remember many a time going through the area when it's channelized and it's been, you know, washing out half of that area. And I'd hate to have to go back in, you know, and, and replace half of the fencing because we got a seven or eight inch rain event. And to a cost of, of one of the three options here, which is the most costly right now at $90,000, I don't want to add an unnecessary cost. I don't favor the fact that we're talking about putting a park in what the, has been ranked the, the number two most beautiful parks in the nation and, and further, you know, imposing on, on that scenic atmosphere. I have questions about whether we've done any type of analysis on wetland floodplain vegetation in that area and the degree to which we could impose on it, where we would run infrastructure such as additional, additional utilities for lighting. And I see you have water on here and I don't know whether you'd be running that for, from the street. And if water isn't going to run from the street, then it would have to cross those.
There's an existing meter from, I guess, remains of an old building that used to be there years and years ago. So there's a meter out by the street that we would just extend that in.
You'd have to run that new line.
Yeah, into the park, yeah.
And then, thanks for the exhibit as well on the Hager Park. And it's interesting to see the dynamic because in there it was the bold dog area and the timid dog area. And you can just see that the idea certainly isn't a fresh one. And I don't have any objection really to, to the Hager Park location, except that on the same day we're given this information to, to discuss, you know, the possibility of, of considering this for a dog park, we're given a ripken report which identifies this area as, as one of three possibilities for a future stadium. And so I certainly don't want to entertain going in the direction of saying, yeah, let's do this here and then read the report a day later and say, oh, by the way, this is, you know, a feasible area for a much larger project and then be back to square one with looking for a dog park. The issues that I outlined last time as it relates to Fairgrounds, and I think for me, it's simply a process of elimination in terms of, of looking at the sites that the task force looked at and then looking at, at sort of their, their sites that rose to the top and then eliminating those. And, and for me, I think that, and, and that will attest to the emails that I send out to everybody, I'm not hugely in favor or against a dog park anywhere. I mean, I've had dogs for years now and I don't feel the necessity. Of course, I have, you know, I have a backyard that, that's larger, so, you know, I don't, I don't feel that necessity. But I, I agree that, that lighting is an issue. I agree that with Councilmember Munson that, you know, we need to see private money come forward before investing public money. And I, I disagree on, on the camera item. And I also disagree on the closing time. I think that whenever you put this type of, of larger activity, you know, that you should give some, some deference to the, the properties that it impacts and I'm not real sure that I'm keen on, on that being open until 10 o'clock at night, but that's, so for me, I think if we're going to do one, at this point for me, Fairgrounds continues to be it, you know, subject to working out those, some of, some of those details that was outlined. Can I make a, another comment?
Please.
Kristen, I'm really flexible on the time that we close. I can accept whatever's time, time is best for the community. But I'm not flexible on the cameras. Because I, I think we really need to understand what the problems are, if there are problems there. Maybe there won't be problems. But I'm aware from discussions that I've had, that there are people who are willing to provide the cameras at very low cost.
And maybe that's my concern, is I see the $8,000 figure of, of public funding for the cameras and, and that's the piece that I'm opposed to, is, is that I, I just don't see the, the cost benefit of spending additional $8,000. So if you've got somebody that's willing to put those up privately or already much reduced cost, then.
Can you respond to that in any way?
I, I think that's part of the, would be part of the 20,000. You were talking about the 40,000 for the basic dog park and then the 20,000. I think the part of the fundraising of the 20,000 would include the camera system. And I think we can find people in our community that are willing to, to give us a camera system at a reduced, below market price.
What I'm reading in the pricing, it says that the security system with eight cameras would be $2,500. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's right.
The lighting was 8,000.
Yeah, that's for a few of those pedestrian poles that we were talking about.
Maybe I read them backwards then.
There's one other thing I want to mention too. There's a lot of vandalism in this park. And I believe that the dog park could help with the vandalism, help prevent some of the vandalism. I'm, I'm aware that the auxiliary police have had their vehicles damaged, they've had windows broken out of their vehicles, they've had their radios stolen. And I'll admit, they're not beside each other, the auxiliary police are in the Powell Building. But I think probably because of the people who would be coming to, to utilize the dog park, that it would make it a little safer place than it would be otherwise. So I think that's another argument in its favor as well.
Don, was, was part of your motion to, or your suggestion to move the playing courts, the basketball?
Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely.
I wanted to clarify that.
And I've talked to Rodney about that and they have another site.
Well, yeah, they're, we're talking about maybe putting poles up there on the multipurpose court that's already there, that's used or something of that nature.
Well, the concrete slab?
Concrete slab, yeah.
The area where they shoot the fireworks from.
Yeah, or something of that nature. There are other free areas, but they're not as ideal as that area. Once again, I'm not sure that this is actually cheaper than, than even an expanded Hager Park, because we're talking about 40,000 plus 20,000 contribution for other things. We haven't worked in the cost of, of moving that pavilion, we haven't worked in the cost of moving the basketball court. We haven't even talked about the sand pit, but I presume that that's, we're not going to do that, the volleyball pit. But I, you know, I predict that we'll be putting in a new trail from the parking area because if you look, it's all, it's this very circuitous path from the parking areas to get to that thing and people are going to be cutting across the fields to get over there. So we'll be putting in a path, we'll be replacing the rest of that fence, that rusty fence. And so I, I think cost-wise, it's going to wind up being comparable to doing it at Hager Park. So if cost is your object, you know, I, I don't think that's it. I think we're just doing the expedient thing here.
And, and again, I'm not opposed to Hager Park. I'm opposed to the conflicting nature of the fact that I have two documents in front of me that, that may conflict with one another, one of which I haven't had an opportunity to read yet.
A stadium expansion doesn't necessarily take that site. It's only if you move the stadium over, over to the park site that it takes that site.
Right, which is one of the options.
I know, but, yeah, geez.
Sounds like we have a consensus forming around the, the Fairgrounds Park if Mr. Metzner is supportive of that. And so I guess in moving forward and whatever proposal comes before us next week, if we get it on the agenda for, under new business for approval, we'd want to touch base and make sure that some of these issues that are addressed are, are addressed in the final part of the motion.
Final part of the motion.
And Rodney, do you feel clear on those at this point or is there anything we need to clarify?
Well, I guess what I'm hearing is Fairgrounds Park with the three items that Councilman Munson mentioned, which is lighting, the camera system and fundraising, it has to be in place.
And moving the basketball.
Moving the basketball court.
And a more reasonable closing, opening and closing time.
And Councilmember, you're saying don't begin construction of the park until the 20,000's in hand.
No, I'm saying, I think we need to begin the construction of the park. Because it'd be nice to use it this summer, but we don't hand over the key until we have our money in hand.
Are you okay with that, Rodney, in terms of?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Is there hours you're suggesting for the park?
Well, my only question about the hours is I think it'd be really difficult to enforce if you have the whole rest of the park being used until 10 o'clock at night. You know, you have guys playing basketball that are, you know, making just as much noise, if not more than people.
I would suggest maybe a better question, and it doesn't have to be resolved today, is what our park hours should be. And if we should have summer hours versus winter hours, which I think we should. I don't, I don't see the park being open till 10:00 in the evening.
That's been talked about.
In the summer, right.
Yeah, it's been talked about.
And I think we should have that discussion for all of our parks.
Yeah.
And I think whatever, whatever we decide for Fairgrounds Park should be for the dog park. But I don't think 10:00 PM. Candidly, I was surprised when I heard 10:00 PM, especially in the winter. I, you know, it gets dark at 5:00, 5:30.
And I ask that, Lou, because the person that lives up the street, we are the ones that would go and open the gates in the morning, okay? And the other ones would lock them up at night. And we just could not imagine why. I mean, when it gets dark in the wintertime, why would you have vandalism? Vandalism starts after that park is shut. And we have no one that patrols it. You know, we had the auxiliary police, but then that's another whole issue. I mean, we really need to have these parks fully watched.
And we're also ultimately going to have to decide, Kristen raised a good issue about City Park. Anybody who's had dogs and, you know, I love my German shepherd and found that I had to actually get my dog run concreted in because I found out what happens when you get three inches of snow and it melts and the dogs go out. So we're going to have to have a lot of decisions on, just like football fields, one do you decide that you're going to close it to save the turf there, but that's for a different day.
So in terms of the hours, we'll, we'll come back to the table perhaps on a separate discussion on park hours in general.
Okay.
Because I do think that would make more, I do, I think there's a valid point being made there.
I do too.
Where is the money coming from?
40,000's from excise tax, which is what money that developers pay when they do land development.
And if there's any over that, which we're, we are anticipating?
That's fundraising. That'd be from the private side.
But I thought they only had to put up the 20,000.
Well, the 40 and the 20, I think will be enough.
And we're not going to go over that, you don't think?
Well, I guess to address some of Councilman Brubaker's issues on the fence.
Yeah.
We're planning on probably painting the fence. We've done that in other areas and it's not going to be brand new, but it, it'll have some improvements to it like that.
Just as long as we're not taking it from the Park Juniors money.
No.
Because we know that there's not enough of that to even go around.
Right.
You know, that's the thing, so.
The other issue is, I don't see the pavilion being moved as a huge priority, to be quite honest. I don't think that that's a.
And, and the parking access?
I won't be parking, I won't be driving.
The parking, the parking lot's way on the other side of the multipurpose court or else way up on top of the hill. There's no parking on that side street.
Probably up on park, up on top of the hill, there's just a little bit that's down. That's it, yeah.
I think a lot of people.
By Hagerstown standards, they're both long distance away.
Yes, because everybody needs to just get out of the car and get there.
All I'm saying is, there'll be pressure for parking and/or better trails.
Hey, Marty, I said the park, so.
Well, I think the best option would be to leave your car at home and walk your dog to the dog park.
That's all the good intentions. I'm just talking about the rural world here.
Well, you can't do that if you live out in the county. Come on.
And make him move to the city.
Oh, okay.
They'll have all these great amenities.
Put that, make sure newspaper picks that one up tonight.
Yeah.
For all those living in the county, move to the city.
Please.
Once they've walked their dogs.
Mayor, Penny, Penny realized, Penny said something that's very good about that park being unsafe. I noticed that Mr. Mason's back there and I was wondering if we could call him up here and just ask a couple of questions. He's a guy, four guys got to run that park. Aren't there guards, aren't there guards at that park? Aren't there people who work at that park for the city of Hagerstown?
Yes, there's temporary people, work seven months a year. Yeah, first of April to them.
What are their hours?
They come in from 3:00 to 10:00, 3:00 in the afternoon to 10:00.
3:00 to 10:00, so they're there till?
During the week, but then during the weekends, they come in at 8:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night.
They're there until it closes?
Yes, they are. They lock the gates.
3:00 in the afternoon until 10 o'clock at night.
And they're the guys that, present, if, if, I'm just guessing now, but they're the guys that presently have to clean up after the dogs that are running around the rest of the park?
They take care of the, the dogs, the bathrooms, the trash and just the rule enforcement.
So if the, so if the dogs are primarily located in one spot, and I know that wouldn't be totally true, then their job would be somewhat more concentrated?
Yeah, part of their duties, if the dog park was there, would be go across their PR and check there and make sure everybody's following the guidelines and, yep, as they do now in the park. I mean, they, they tell people about the leases, leashes and clean up the messes.
Well, and I agree with Councilman Alshar that the cameras need to be as inexpensive as they can possibly be, but, so.
But you want those that really work because our neighborhoods first ended up with cameras that didn't do.
You're right.
Anything. I mean, you know, $5,000 and they, they did nothing.
The lighting, it's not just going to be a cost, the lighting's 8,000, the, the cameras are 2,500 in the estimate. And, and the lights are going to be tricky. Again, this is the only site where the yards go right up to the property. Lighting's going to be tricky. Even the houses up in the hill are closer than at other sites.
But the cameras can be put on the internet, can't they?
I'm talking about the lights now.
And everybody, everybody can see them that wants to tune in to this, to the site, right?
Well, usually you have a password. It's usually people that, you know, security and those kind of people look at.
I'm, I'm sure the task force people would want to know the password. I'm sure we'll give it to them. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Any other questions while we have staff here or?
So we'll draft a motion for next Tuesday's regular meeting with those four conditions and then move forward with the construction, but not turn the keys over until the 20,000. Is that, is that the consensus?
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, task force members.
Thanks for doing that.
Thank you, task force.
I hope that wasn't, yeah, again, I still think that'll happen.
Good afternoon.
Next item on the agenda is license agreement with 2123 North Locust Street, otherwise known as Burkett's Deli. Mr. Tissue?
Yes, and with me tonight is Charles Burkett, the owner of that establishment. I'll have some introduction to this and then I think he would like to address the mayor and council as well. But a few weeks ago, maybe in February, I guess it was, I should say, we received a request from Mr. Burkett about the possibility of using the public alley that is immediately adjacent to his deli down on North Locust Street, if he could use that as an outdoor dining area, outdoor cafe area. Typically in those situations, for these cafes that we have in the downtown, we either, we, we issue license agreements to the proprietor to be able to use the public land in that way. I guess just as a little bit of a background on that alley beside Mr. Burkett's deli, we rebuilt the parking lot in 1996. And at that time, we weren't going to even have that alley go across past the deli. It was just going to be a landscape area. But we got some feedback, actually during construction, from some neighbors to the east, that they wanted to see that alley main, or established there so that they could go straight across to the east. Knowing that when Mr. Burkett Knowing that, when Mr. Burkett came in, we took it to the Board of Traffic and Parking because we didn't want to, we wanted to have people be able to have their opinion on this. And at the Board of Traffic and Parking, the feedback we got from almost everybody east of the North Locust Street was that they were okay with this alley being encumbered with this outdoor seating area or cafe. There was one individual that had some concerns about over a long-term period. Everybody else seemed to be in favor. But one of the problems that Mr. Burkett and I have had many conversations about is the issue of this alley and the amount of utilities that's in it. And there's a sketch in your packet, there is a storm drain in there that basically drains Jonathan Street, the downtown, and it goes right through there. It's in that alley and goes across and heads, it's actually the one that heads down to Municipal Stadium. That takes up most of the alley. There's also some other communication lines and things in there. So it's almost to the point where it's impossible to put any foundations in there, whether for a deck or fences or anything like that. So that's a, that's a problem that we'll have to figure out how to solve. But I guess the purpose of the memo and, and the presentation tonight is to get feedback from the mayor and city council is whether or not we're willing to issue Mr. Burkett a license agreement to use that area with the condition that he can't put foundations into the alley there because of the underground utilities. And usually those license agreements have some sort of a, I'll call it a kickout clause, that basically the city, if we feel like we need to have that alley back open, we could ask the, the person to, to leave. In this case, we drafted a draft, we drafted a license agreement, it has 160 days in there, six months. Six months notice we could give him, and if he would have to, to vacate that site. The other option we could go with is a quick claim of that area. Basically, the city would say, we have no further interest in that area. We could convey it basically to Mr. Burkett, but of course, there would have to be easements established over all those utilities. So he still has the problem of trying to put foundations and things in. The utilities aren't going to go anywhere. I guess it's our recommendation that we have a license agreement. It seems to be the thing that we most often would do in a situation like this. I think, I'll turn it over to Mr. Burkett. I think he has some concerns about, he's going to make a nice investment here in our downtown. He's concerned about the possibility of not being able to be there long term, but I'll let you go from there.
When I first sent you all a letter, I had this nice idea, and it was, I was, my cost was 15,000 to 20,000 dollars, and thought this was going to be real simple. And it's gotten real complicated and restrictive, and it would be hard for me to invest 20,000 dollars into a spot that I'm going to be given 60 days or 90 days. It's kind of gone three different times. I've gotten three different notices. One was 30 days, one was 90, and now six months. And it's hard to invest that kind of money in something that you could be thrown out of in six months. I think that's a little different down there than probably most of the leases you all sign, because what I'm thinking is most of them are for places that are right along your sidewalk. That area's not in a main walk area. It's not doing the city any good. I've actually brought up with me my proposal of what I would like to do, and I'll, I'll pass that out to you all. And I was talking to Mr. Munson today, and as a part of, of my proposal here, maybe I'd be willing to live with a lease agreement if the city would maybe help fix the one portion of the alley entrance there so that it no longer looks like an alley. I took a picture and added it to that. So that's where I'm at. I would just like to, I, I've been down on Locust Street for probably about 14 years or so now. I've run a cleaning business out of that office down there, and God's blessed me. I've, I've purchased the building 12 years or so ago, and have bought other buildings up the street and have tried to maintain them in a, in a good way. And a couple of years ago, I bought the building that the deli is in, and knowing that Carla's Deli would close up, and I, it's been my ambition to have my own deli. So that's where we're at. And again, I just thought this was going to be an easy build-a-deck, and I just wanted it to look professional. I wanted it to look nice, and wanted to use composite material. And, you know, the, I was, when I initially, my first bid came in at 25,000 dollars, and found somebody a little cheaper, but then I started hearing all of the restrictions. And one of my other ideas was if I'm given the ground, then I'd feel a little more comfortable investing a little more money in the area. And that's where.
Do you own 2123, that property?
Yes.
With where your restaurant's located?
I own, well, me and the bank own 11 through 21 and 31 through 37.
The only reason I ask is because usually in a quit claim, the property's half goes to each property owner on, on, on each side of the alley.
Well, you have city entrance.
Right.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, but we assumed that our city parking lot would be on the other side, so.
Right, right. Well, I just didn't know, because if you didn't own the property technically, it wouldn't be his. It would be whoever owns the property, but if you own the property, then.
I have two questions, one for you. If we quit claimed it or somehow transferred the property to your ownership, are you satisfied with all the access requirements we have to have to get to those utility lines that you see in there?
My understanding is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the only utilities that I would be coming upon would be about six feet that come out from the.
There's a map here.
Yeah. The pink is the storm drain.
There's a little, a bunch of bushes and a phone line in the middle of this little alleyne here. There are phone lines right here. I think it's the blue. I guess that's what that would be. Would be that blue. That's the only thing, other than that main drain.
But Rodney, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's possible we could have to come in there and jackhammer if there was a blockage or something.
There will be a day when that storm drain needs replaced.
Yeah, things like that. So I'm, I'm just trying to make sure we're all on the same page here. And Rodney, are you satisfied if we quit claimed it, that we could get in there? I know you're recommending the license agreement, but if we turned it over and it was his private property, that these easement rights would be guaranteed enough to, to do the job?
We'd have to write the easement agreement as such to give us those rights.
And, and you'd have to understand that we might have to come in there because it's public safety. I mean, we'd have to get, and it could be we'd have to get in there in a heartbeat, you know? I mean, that's my understanding. Is that correct? Yeah.
Well, and, and honestly, that's why I thought the deck, although more expensive, would be a better route to go, because that could be sectioned down or whatever, and then replaced. If I go and pour concrete.
Right, there you go.
Then I'm having to repour.
Right.
So that's why I was looking at the longer, even though it was going to cost more money, I liked the idea of the deck.
And something for the, for Rodney and lawyer, if, if we quit claimed it, then we would, well, whatever, the damages. Let's say we had to go in. How would we resolve the damages to his planking and his improvements?
It's however the agreement would be written.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, that would have to be taken care of, because it could happen. And, and when it happens, then we don't want it up in the air as to what would be the.
It's no different than my home. I have lines that go across my yard, and, and when people need to dig up, they go in and they dig up.
Well, but, but who pays for it is, is what I'm saying, you know? That would be, need to be resolved. You might say, hey, you guys just ruined my deck. You know, yes, I gave you access to it, but, but you need to pay to replace the planking or whatever they tore up, you know? Make sure we, make sure we provide for that, that's all, because you're building over these major lines that were in a public right of way. I think that alley's redundant, because, you know, when you go up the street, you have to be careful not to pull in there, and you pull up into, into the central lot instead, you know? Because the alley, to me, is redundant, and if you quit claim it, at least we get a little bit more tax money out of it. Well, that, the way I see it, it, it becomes taxable.
I mean, that depends, because you said there is one party that opposes it. I just want to make sure I understand who that party is. I mean, are they having delivery trucks go through there four times a day?
No, and it was not major opposition, matter of fact.
Okay.
Matter of fact, that individual came, if I'm correct, and pretty much said he didn't want to hold the project up and would not involve an ongoing business for somebody who can't get their vehicles back there, is what I understand.
We don't own the alley, right? It's not the city's.
We don't know that we own the fee title to it. We think that we would have to quit claim it, just say we have no interest in it.
Right.
Law of the alley is in the city, we don't.
We're not, we're not actually selling it.
No.
Just.
We're turning it over with all those conditions.
Right.
The condition of a quit claim would be resolving all the stuff. And I'm not trying to make it difficult for you. I was just trying to make you understand, sir.
And where?
Just so we're all, it's better for everybody if we're on the same page.
I guess my biggest question, my biggest concern would be how soon are you looking at digging up this?
I'm not saying we are, but I'm saying we could have an emergency.
Falls in.
Right. And.
May never.
It may never happen.
Exactly.
Right.
Better we have a big chunk of ice coming down.
On the other hand, if it does, these things have been known, and then there's, nobody thought of whatever. That's why, I'm just saying, try to think of the things ahead of time.
Where do you plan on actually putting the deck? I mean, I got a bunch of pictures and drawings, but I don't have any that actually show what's being covered up. Is it 20 feet of this alley? Is it the whole thing?
It's the whole, it's about 700 square foot.
But I think it's neat that you want to invest, so that's why I'm trying to make this work.
And how much of the sidewalk in front of your deli?
I'm sorry.
Do that again.
If you look at the picture, I mean, clearly we can't impede the ability for pedestrians.
No, it's, let me try to find this here real quick.
Trying to figure out how wide that sidewalk is, in terms of if.
It's a rudimentary drawing.
Couldn't be allowed to go on the sidewalk.
And can I, let me ask a question while he's. You got to get to that deck somehow. While he's looking for, for the drawing.
I just assumed it would come through his door.
I assumed it was going to wrap around the front.
This here's a drawing that, that I did, right?
This is my.
Right here is the building. This is the entrance way to the alley. This is what I was asking you all to take care of building up into, make it a complete thing. This here's the.
Wait, what, a payment?
Alley.
Now, I think he's saying take away the curb cut, is that correct?
Right.
Make it, make it a sidewalk.
Take away the sidewalk.
Where the drain's sitting in the middle of it.
Right.
Correct.
Make that a sidewalk.
The curb cut could be.
As long as it still drains properly.
It would be a curb opening inlet. We'd modify the inlet. It'd still be, it'd still drain.
And then you have the alleyne here. This here would be a deck. There would be a ramp here coming up onto the deck. And, well, this here, I wanted to do a sunroof type overhang there, but.
One that you can take down, one that you can take apart.
Right.
Well, and now I'm being told that it will cost about $5,000 to hire an engineer, and. How do you get on the deck?
Oh, well, and that's what you're, like, here's, here's the front sidewalk. I have it set back just a little bit with an inset step that, in the front, that you would gain access to.
Okay, that's what I was curious about, whether you were coming out of the deli and going right in and blocking up some of the sidewalk. You're just talking about putting the deck on the side.
Yeah, no.
And where do you come out? The deli, there's a way to get from the deli.
The entrance to the deli is.
There you go.
No, but out of the deck, though.
No.
No?
No, no, they would have to.
Have to go around?
Yeah.
I know, it's ridiculous, and everybody's asked me why I want to do this.
You didn't want to buy food, find food inside and sit outside and eat.
I'll tell you why, because the fried chicken is really good, and you'll just take it outside around the side to the deck.
Well, I want to tell you, that meal today looked really good on that board, but I didn't have time to stop. Now, I have two questions for you, because I've been in that parking lot. That's how I go home, okay? Where are your trucks going to park? Because they usually use that side to do their delivering.
Oh, no, well.
Now, it varies.
Most of my deliveries, they stay out on the main.
Well, since you can.
I get no deliveries from that. Matter of fact, to be honest with you, my guys who do delivery use it probably more than anybody else, other than the city. When the city lets out, I noticed a big increase in the cars that shoot up through that alleyway.
Well, no, I'm talking about the trucks that are actually parked, that they are actually delivering, because I've seen it, and I had asked Tim that, and Tim said, Penny, you'll have to bring that up, because no one.
What are you seeing delivered?
Along the side of your building is where I see the big, the trucks, not huge trucks, okay? But there are trucks that are parked there.
Maybe when it was Carla's Deli, you might have saw a bear.
No, 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 sir. No, this is when I became councilperson again, and I've seen trucks that have been parked there. And that was my question. Where, where are these vehicles? Are they, are they going to stay on the street then?
I guess I'm not under.
It would be like if you had the Schwanz truck, but a little bit larger, that, and they are white, they are the white trucks.
It may be that those are for the Academy Theater, even some of the, when they have plays, they have that backstage.
They would be parking over there. They, no, because, yeah, parking in the back as well.
My cleaning business has a white box truck. If you saw a white box truck, then that's, but I get deliveries from John F. Martin, and they park on the front.
You're going to have to park your box truck somewhere else then.
For the last three months, it's been parked at my church, so.
It's just, it's just like with the pop, you know, the pop trucks and all of that.
Right, they, Pepsi pulls either right up in front of the deli, blocks the whole road, to be honest with you.
And that's not supposed to happen. I was told that too, and it happens.
And I even told them.
I'm telling you, and I know that.
I told them, stay on the left side.
I know.
And pull up.
They don't listen. No.
Yeah.
Well, I think the issue is, do we want to come into some agreement, whether it's a license agreement or a quit claim? Is that a valid thing? And I think it seems to be that we all want to support Mr. Burkett in his endeavor here to, to create this space for his, his business, and that it. And that the essential question is, does this alley really need to be there anymore? And, I mean, my opinion is no. I think that it's not very functional and doesn't really create any kind of burden on anybody in the neighborhood to be able to maneuver around or, or access the alley across the, across the way.
The alley is actually too small for certain trucks. I mean.
My building's been damaged from larger trucks coming through there. I have an overhang. So when they put that, or left that, whatever they did with that alley there, I mean, my, I've had my building damaged from vehicles coming through there.
I would say the license agreement, if we go that route, you'll approve that possibly next week. He gets a building permit, he gets going. If we convey it, we have to draw up a plat, do a deed, do an easement agreement. It'll be, it'll be months until he can actually even apply for his building permit to get going. So that's a much more rigorous process.
Well, I was just going to ask, I mean, if.
Give him a temporary license agreement.
But does there really need to be a deck, I guess? I mean, is it possible to have, just to use what's there, the asphalt to?
I'm starting to come around to this idea of an outside patio. And I, and, and that's why I put in, but that's even going to cost me 12,000 dollars. I, I, I would like to see a lease agreement, because it is different than these other areas, of at least three years. And, and that's, that was my proposal here. A lease of agreement of at least three years, and then the city help out with the re.
To take away the curb cut?
Right, exactly.
I would propose a, a quit claim, because it makes it into taxable property. I don't see why we'd need that little slice, that little piece for anything or any project we're doing. The parking lot provides two-way access, and maybe we can do a temporary licensing agreement so he can get going. I know that makes more work for staff with the quit claim, quit claim coming down the road, because there is a legal process for that.
Yeah, it takes time.
He has to go through, I think he has to go through the planning.
Meantime, a temporary license agreement would allow him to get started.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I encourage anybody that wants to invest downtown, and if we can find a way to do that, that's where I'd like to go. That'd be my preference.
I would tend to agree with you on that. The quit claim seems to be the best route. Any other opinions?
Rodney, Rodney's strong here. Would that utility pole and the light pole have to be relocated?
No, he would, that would be about the limits of his acquisition.
There are a couple, irrelevant signs on that utility pole, though, that would need to be taken down. They're pretty ugly, and they don't, they're not relevant anymore.
I brought that up today, because I, it, we put a sign out there, and it's got these two bent-up, don't turn into alley signs, and I've really tried to make it a decent establishment down there. I mean, we, we've gotten rid of the, well, anyway, never mind.
It looks good. It looks good.
Good, that's.
Looks great.
Well, and he's, he's really working hard to make, to improve that particular area, too. The front of it, you're going to be working on your facade some, right?
Right.
And in the back, he's moved his dumpster, so it's not noticeable. You can't see it unless you're looking for it some distance away. That helps. And he's getting ready to clean his parking lot. And first things first, I should have said that. He sells a really good ham sandwich on whole wheat bread with lettuce and man.
He sells a really good ham sandwich on whole wheat bread with lettuce and mayonnaise, and he needs to sell a whole lot more of it.
There's a whole rack of special sauces in there, too. You've got hot sauce out the wazoo there, too, as I recall.
I mean, would you be willing to invest under those circumstances? I mean, you don't have to answer now, but I think.
No, I would. From the very beginning, I wanted to, but it's gotten complicated in that, you know, now we're talking an engineer and, and, you know, it just, so if the city could help out where it could, I want to, I have no problem committing this money, I, you know, and this is coming on my house. This is not money I just have laying around, so.
Well, maybe I misunderstood, but I gathered you prefer the quitclaim arrangement, so you own the property, that's, that's what I'm.
I would feel more comfortable knowing that it's my property, and I'm making an investment in my property.
Right. And actually, that way, you could be going and we'd see what you've done before the quitclaim was even approved, you know? If we could do a temporary.
Give him a license agreement first.
What would happen with the landscape island there? I mean, what is the boundary of that alley? Does it square off, you know, where that landscape island is? In other words, the landscape island kind of cuts back this way? Would the limit of what we're quitting the claim on be a straight line down that way, or how?
It could be anything, because we own all that property, so.
See.
I was, the drawing I showed you, and I'm sorry, it's very rudimentary. But it would be from the back of my building, all the way over to the, almost to the tip of the alley, and then slant down this way, no matter which way I went. And then thinking of doing a patio, I also started thinking, well, I could do a patio with some dirt, you know, plants, some other bushes in some different areas in that area, and just try to, instead of pouring a whole slab of concrete, you know, pouring concrete and leaving some open areas for bushes and, and other things.
The island, what's your disposition of the island?
My only thing with the alleyne is I would like to put fence around it to prevent the dogs from using it. We have trees on Locust Street, and when it gets hot out, I mean, people just don't take care of their animals like I do at home, and they poop everywhere, and, and they end up in the street, and I end up being a street cleaner as well, so.
So that would be an issue in our agreement, huh, the island?
I suggest we do the license agreement, be followed with a quitclaim, so Mr. Burkett can get moving on this thing and know that he's going to ultimately have ownership.
I'll second that, if it's this motion.
Any other?
And allow him to do it in the least expensive way, so.
Sure.
So that's safe.
Absolutely.
Would that, are you making a motion with the city helping out with the sidewalk?
Well, I'm assuming we would do that, but this is, it's a work session, it's not a formal motion, but yeah, that would, that would be my proposal.
This is just a consensus of the council. I mean, after all, I made the original proposal.
We do, we get that taken care of, yeah.
Well, I think that we need to encourage city staff to identify available funding for downtown, like the funding we just approved for the southwest quadrant here. They could be used for this exact type of project.
Absolutely.
That doesn't happen to be in that specific area, but could certainly be eligible for it.
When I do think it, we need to, there needs to be some clarity on exactly what the city's going to do with the sidewalk, with the, taking away the curb cut and the drain and cost, how much that's going to cost. And in the process of quitting that claim, I think that the city would ultimately be responsible for that, but we should kind of know what the cost is for that.
Get back to us, we'll get a motion for it, get it done.
See, I'll put it on the agenda for next week for a license agreement.
Sure.
So if I'm hearing.
Get us some estimations on the cost.
Temporary license agreement while we move forward with the quitclaim process.
Would there be something in that license agreement saying that the quitclaim will be coming, or?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yes, we will. We can put it in the motion. But we, but you have to understand, that's a bureaucratic piece, that we can't.
Yeah, that'll take some time to get done, but yes, yeah, you'll get all that done.
But we can put it in the motion that we intend to do it, you know, provide improvements go forward and.
Yeah, I guess I would discourage you from the deck, only because you're going to have to worry about handicap accessibility and, and, you know, building a ramp and those kinds of things, which may end up increasing your costs, as opposed to some of what we have already with the fences on the sidewalk that just allow people to come in and out, and you still have a, sort of a boundary.
Well, and that's why I'm kind of coming around to the whole idea of a.
Brick's good, too.
I would like to afford brick, but I think that's going to be a question.
There's a lot of brick over by the Pangborn, you could just go get some truckload and take it away.
Cheap, too.
Yeah.
They might pay you to take it away.
Yeah, they might actually pay you.
Yeah, but that means I need to lay it then, so.
All right. Thank you for your, again, thank you for your interest in investing in downtown and keeping your business going and making improvements, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
I had a, I had a sandwich from his establishment for lunch today, and I recommend it.
I appreciate it.
Don't forget the fried chicken. It's pretty good, too. Next item is Department of Community and Economic Development Loan Portfolio Overview and Update. And we have John Listition and Jonathan Kearns to provide us a presentation.
Good afternoon. What we wanted to do today was take an opportunity to provide the mayor and council with a overview or snapshot, so to speak, of the current loan programs that the city of Hagerstown offers. We will also touch on the total loan portfolio, the value of the city's current loan portfolio. And we will also discuss loans that are in arrears, on their payments, and also our current process for handling these loans that are in arrears. And I'm not sure if Stacy's been introduced to the mayor and council before, I think she may have been at the budget retreat back, back a few months ago. But Stacy Pierre-Louis is our business, business and community development finance specialist, and she works with our loan programs, with the HRA, and with our loan applicants. And with that, I'll let her take it away and walk you through the PowerPoint presentation that we have for you this afternoon.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, so what we'll do is we'll just go through the programs that we already offer, and take a look at what our existing loan portfolio looks like. What we did is we divided them into two separate categories, city-owned and those that are not city-owned. What we mean by city-owned is they are, they're on our books. We administer them, we hold the liens if there are, and we actually take care of all of those loans, as opposed to being just an administrator for the loans. Some of them, we're only the loan administrator, and then those books are actually with another entity. For example, Minority Women Own Business and Maryland Housing Rehabilitation Program, those go along with the state, so. This is just a snapshot of the status of our loans that we own. We have about 1.9 million that are active, or 63% of our portfolio are active loans that we do receive payments on. We've got about 795,000, which are deferred, and about 327,000 in delinquent status right now. The total portfolio that, that is owned by the city is a little over $3 million. And this is another, another chart, just to show you by loan type, what the portfolio is made out of. The bulk of it is CDBG, multifamily, business revolving, and our CDBG nonprofit loans. Now, just wanted to point out that those percentages that you see are not based on the number of loans in each of those categories, but the dollar amount. So, for example, in CDBG multifamily, that 32% of the portfolio, that only consists of six loans. Whereas only 5% for homeownership, that consists of 11 loans. So just keep in mind there, those are based on the current dollar amount of those loan categories. So just a little bit of information about each of them. The Business Revolving Loan Fund, we provide loans for sole proprietorships, partnerships, LLCs, and corporations. It is funded by a grant from the Maryland Department of Business and Economic Development, also from program income that we earn from administering the loans, and periodic transfers from other city funds. The purpose of the program is to assist in recruitment, retention, and expansion of businesses within the city. And some eligible costs include improvements in rehabilitation of buildings, land, machinery and equipment, infrastructure improvements, or even working capital. Up to 30% of a loan amount can be used for working capital. This is what our portfolio looks like now. We've got the, I've got the origination dates there to show that we've gotten some loans from about 2007 up until just last month with the Maryland Theater. Currently, our total active loans are 645,000. We do have some delinquency with our business revolving loans, delinquent being defined as past due 90 days or more. That includes Spirit of the Lotus Tea Company, made in November of 2007, the remaining principal balance is $9,900. Clyde F. Demming, or 28 South Potomac Street LLC, done in 2005, that has a balance left of about $74,000. And VJS Inc., otherwise known as Rocky's Pizza, from 2009, they owe about $103,000. So right now, the business revolving loan delinquency is about $188,000.
Just a question for clarification. These amounts that you're showing us are just the amounts of outstanding debt associated with these loans related to the Business Revolving Loan Fund? It doesn't include utilities, or property taxes, or rent, or any other thing?
Right.
That's correct.
Exactly.
This is strictly on the loan program. And I would like to point out one thing on this slide. It's important to note, because there's a business known as 28 South that happens to be at 28 South Potomac. That business is not this loan. This entity, 28 South Potomac Street LLC, is the entity that owns that building.
This is just another chart that shows those same delinquent loans that we looked at. On the left, you can see the dollar amount, the highest amount being VJS Inc., or Rocky's Pizza. Their business revolving loan is $103,000, and they're about 31 months past due. And then as the, as the bars move to the right, it shows how many months they're past due. So Spirit of the Lotus Tea Company is the furthest past due at 59 months. And the second, VJS Inc. at the bottom there, is an economic development loan for $18,000. That one is about 41 months past due.
And just to clarify, I think that loan was made in 2009, separate from the revolving loan. It was a one-time economic development loan, as far as we are aware.
Is the Spirit of the Lotus Company still in business?
The.
Recently successful collection efforts there.
We haven't had any successful collection efforts there, and it's doubtful that we're going to collect that, that loan. But we have collected loans that old. We've made cash settlements, most recently Paradise Hospitality Partners, in the last administration, I believe it was probably in 2011. Mr. Kearns negotiated a settlement where we actually recovered $50,000 on a, on a loan that was probably about 65 due. And that loan was about 60 months past due. So we do attempt to follow up, and if there's opportunities, then we take advantage of those to get our money.
Thank you.
These are inactive business revolving loans, these are no longer on our books. There's a possibility, but it's very unlikely, that we'll be able to collect on these amounts. They range from 2000 up until June of 2008. You see the original loan amounts on the right, and then on, on the left, I'm sorry, and then on the far right, that shows the total loss of opportunity for program income. So that loss is basically, those are the amounts that we would have made program income if we were able to collect on those, but those are just inactive, yes, sir.
What's the difference between delinquent and inactive?
Well, delinquent, these are still there, they're still on the books. These inactive don't show on the books anymore at all. They just, we just know that they're there.
Basically written them off.
Yeah.
And on this slide in particular, the original loan amount of 392, if I understand what you're saying correctly, we were able to collect roughly, what is it, $81,000 of the 392,000 we invested. And, and none of these entities currently exist? I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out the criteria in which you deem them to go from the active to the inactive list.
Some of the entities have declared bankruptcy, and debts have been discharged, and others, the entities have just, they don't exist anymore. But on some of these loans, we have personal guarantees, and so while they're inactive, we do revisit them on occasion. Should someone come into money, there may be an opportunity for us to collect on, on old debt.
In line with others that they are indebted to.
If it hasn't been discharged in a bankruptcy or something.
And in accordance with what place we fall in line?
Yes, sir.
To who else is in line in front of us?
Yes, because on many of these, as Mr. Naren could tell you.
We're in subordinate positions.
In second or third place.
And are all of these for physical properties in which these entities owned?
We would have to provide, we would have to do some research on some of those, because they're so old. Some could have been business loans, it could have just been working capital, but we would have to, we would have to dig that information up for you and come back.
But continuing, there are continuing efforts to get that money.
Not on those.
We, as John said, we.
John just said that they check back.
Well, we, well, we do check, and for example, if, if, if we learn that a particular loan has a personal guarantee, or if we know a particular loan has a personal guarantee, and we learn that that person has assets available now, we would refer that to the city attorney's office to follow up on. So it's unlikely, but it's possible to collect funds.
So my question, okay, I'm sorry, I did not ask my question very well. Do you still contact these people and ask them for money?
No, sir. And most of those, again, don't exist as entities, but we know who the principals are. And if we learn that they have assets, then, then we refer that to the city attorney.
Check the newspaper to see who won the lottery.
That's right.
It's kind of like that, sir. Or if someone's engaged in other business activity, and we learn that they have assets, we would contact the city attorney. The City Theater, though, is currently in bankruptcy, and that's a matter still kind of pending.
You can't touch that, right?
Well, we can't touch them, but, but we, we are actively trying to pursue that, so.
What was the amount you said in delinquent active accounts? I'm sorry, I missed.
That's it. For business revolving loan, I believe the total delinquency is 187.
Okay.
And then, and sometimes we're in a position where you're between a rock and a hard place with these types of old loans, where how much staff time and fees with the city attorney do you spend on something that you're unlikely to ever recoup? So there's a balance there.
Juice has to be worth the squeeze.
Yes. Sorry, Stacy, go ahead.
That's okay. Okay, another loan type that we offer is our community development block grant loans, otherwise known as CDBG. Those are for the rehabilitation of single-family and multifamily homes, commercial properties, or nonprofits. They're funded by a portion of our annual CDBG entitlement, and currently 30 of our 58 CDBG loans are currently deferred. We'll go into a little bit more detail about, about that in a few slides. These are our active CDBG loans. 11 of them are homeownership loans, totaling about $120,000. Multifamily, that's the largest loan amount, the biggest chunk of the pie there, $721,000, consisting of six loans. Single-family, five loans, about $24,000, and then we've got our nonprofits and commercial there, too. So our active portfolio for CDBG is about 1.6 million, so we are able to make program income. And with that, we're able to put back into the program and, and invest in additional families and members of the community. We do have some delinquency for CDBG loans as well, defined as past due 90 days or more. There is one single-family loan originated in September of 1994. They still work with us actively, we just have to work with them to be able to make their payments. They actually just made a payment just at the beginning of April. So these, although they're past due 90 days, they're still attempting to make payments when they can, and they're, and they're very cooperative and working with us.
And they have their home?
Yes, ma'am. We've also got Demcor LLC from May of '05, about $27,000, and then the Elks Lodge from February of '91, with the remaining balance of. February of '91, with the remaining balance of about 80,000 there. So, they total about $139,000.
And I would also add, similar to the single-family loan, the Elks Lodge, although they are behind in their payments, they have attempted to make payments recently. I believe they made a few payments late 2012. So, sometimes, even though they are delinquent, we do...
Could you go back any further? From the timeframe that Mr. Alshar left from a councilperson to a commissioner, have you gone back that far to see if there has been any payments on that?
On the Elks Lodge? Yeah, we receive, we actually were used to receive regular payments from them.
Okay. Because Kristen and Lynn Endershot had gone...
At that time, the loan amount was like 230.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we've struggled with...
There's only 20 remaining.
Yeah. They've struggled recently, we'll put it at that. But they, they're still attempting, and we think, you know, we have an open line of communication with them. There may even be a chance where we look at a possible loan payment adjustment to maybe ease the burden, so we can continue to work with them on that.
Can I flip back up here a minute where it has the nonprofits? That's 500, about 5, 60. Are these buildings?
Yes. They're considered public facilities, or that's, and that's a term generally defined by the Community Development Block Grant Program, homeless shelters.
Okay. What I'm getting at, it's that they're not on the tax rolls.
Correct.
Okay. Our deferred CDBG loans, deferred meaning they're, we don't require payment at this time, and they do not accrue interest, but they are made on a case-by-case basis, typically to very low-income homeowners. We do have a lien on the home, and repayment occurs at either the death of the owner, or sale, or transfer of the lien or property. We've got 25 single-family loans right now that are deferred for about $430,000. We also make deferred loans for nonprofit organizations. Repayment terms vary depending on the use of those funds. We've currently got five at about 364,000. So, our total deferred loan balance is 700, about 795,000. The bulk of that is more than 10 years old, about 478,000 is, was done more than 10 years ago, so. That concludes the city-owned portfolio. The last two programs are not owned by the city. They're administered by the city. The first is the Minority and Women-Owned Business Program. That's for businesses that are at least 51% owned by minorities or women. They can use the funds for working capital, for technology, for marketing, inventory, and other things that can help their business advance. It's funded by a grant from the Small Business Administration. The loans are up to $7,500 per recipient, and right now, we've got five businesses taking part in the program, and their loan balance is total up to about $29,000. And those businesses are listed there below. The last program also is administered by the city and not city-owned. It's the MERP, or Maryland Housing Rehabilitation Program. It's for low-to-moderate-income residents in need of home repairs to bring their properties up to code, to eliminate safety or health hazards, improve accessibility at their homes, or complete weatherization, or energy conservation improvements. Funded by the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, and we administer the loan from application all the way to settlement, and then those loan files actually go back to the state, and they hold the liens on, for those loans. Yes, sir.
You kind of breezed by there. The deferred CDBG loans, I didn't hear what the 10 and the 20 years meant.
Oh. About $73,000 of that total deferred balance of 795 was done more than 20 years ago. So, some of those loans are from, like, the early...
So, it's not delinquent, it's just deferred?
Right, exactly.
Okay. The 478?
Exactly.
Okay. Is that what the asterisk is supposed to indicate?
Yes.
All right.
And again, going back to how we're handling default, just to kind of, a little more background on that, our current guidelines and process state that if a loan is determined to be in default, the matter will be conveyed to the city attorney for disposition. Just as John and Jonathan mentioned, we remain in contact with our delinquent clients by phone, by mail, monitor any payments made, and calculate accumulated interest and penalties. And so, basically, what we're going to do is we're going to meet with the HRA on April 30th. On that agenda, we're going to have a review of those guidelines and processes for delinquency and collection efforts, and see if there are any alternative recovery options that we should consider. And we're also continuing to work to increase efficiency with functions and munis for loan payment tracking, monthly invoices, and providing more convenient ways for them to make payments, such as automatic draft or online payment options. And that's it. Does anyone have any additional questions about those?
I do have one additional question.
Okay.
Going back to that 10 and 20 years, am I to assume that based on that slide, that of those deferred CDBG loans, because the two amounts don't add up, the 478, 73 doesn't add up to the 794, that there, we don't have any delinquency in that account currently?
Well, they're deferred.
Yeah.
They're not making payments anyway. And the numbers...
If you said 30 of 58 are deferred.
Oh.
What about the other 28?
That would be the list on the active...
The active CDBG loans.
Right.
Yeah.
And there's just the one CDBG, single-family, that was...
Okay, I got you. All right. All right. The one slide came before the other one. All right.
Any additional questions or concerns?
I think this is very informative. It kind of gives us a picture of what programs are out there, what kinds of delinquencies we have, and what kinds of success we have on recovering the funds that we're distributing, so.
The one thing I would add is that on several of the current business revolving delinquencies, staff are working on some strategies. We're going to have a meeting with Mr. Naren, and then we'd come back to the body with some recommendations on how to proceed with those current ones, as they may involve some legal action.
Yeah, I mean, because the CDBG, I guess for me, you know, I sort of put things in groups, and the CDBG is, for all intents and purposes, pass-through funding. But the revolving loan funding is really money that we sort of put forth from our taxpayers in varying degrees and programs to create those different types of opportunities for investment. And if I correct, it's 300,000 on the inactive, about 200,000 on the active, or about a half million dollars outstanding in a handful of accounts that are delinquent, right?
Yes.
So, it's a matter of addressing those six to eight accounts out of the total to figure out a way to timely recoup that 500,000. Well, I guess most of it you can't, because it's inactive and in bankruptcies and things like that.
Correct. There's actually, from a staff perspective, we may...
Less than half of that.
We may have an opportunity to collect somewhere in the range of about 200,000 to maybe 275. Yes.
About 200 out of the 500.
That we would say we have a decent shot of collecting.
About three or four out of the six to eight accounts.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you feel like, and I don't want to belabor the point, because we do have to adjourn and move to the celebration of business, are there better standards, do you think, for the conditions under which we make these loans to prevent getting in the situation where we find we have delinquent accounts?
And I would make, I'd make this general statement. And actually, first, I'll quote Mr. Kearns. If we don't want a bad debt, we shouldn't loan money. But he has a point there, because we are a business lender of last resort. We're filling gaps. We're taking on high risk. Considering the high-risk loans, that angle, this isn't that bad. And I really think that Mr. Kearns and Stacy have gone a long way working with the HRA in professionalizing the, how we're doing things. And so, that's the short answer. I think we are doing things better, and I do think that we will always have the risk of having defaults and staying on top of it, and minimizing that is just where we try to focus.
Well, I appreciate your efforts on this, and look forward to further reviewing this issue when you bring it back to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll have city administrator comments?
If I could, while John's still close to the table, just to make sure you caught it under new business. You've got a small incentive for El Paso Restaurant, and also a new program called Spring Sprouts. Just wanted to make sure, mayor and council were aware of those before voting on them next week. And maybe if you could summarize the incentive for El Paso?
Yes, there's two issues that we're addressing. One is where to place a dumpster. So, there's a licensing agreement where El Paso, at their expense, will place a dumpster in the city-owned dumpster enclosure to the rear of the Elizabeth Hager Center. It's a win for the city. It's a win for El Paso, as well as the other tenants, because they've expressed that they're okay with the other tenants in the Elizabeth Hager Center placing their trash in the dumpster, because we're providing the space. So, that's a good win-win. The other aspect is the owners of El Paso, they're undertaking some renovations, and the agreement is a loan-to-grant, similar to what we did with Flying Pie. It's capped at 6,000, because that's where we figure they're going to land in terms of their cost on material. They're doing a lot of work themselves, and so, we weren't able to calculate in labor cost. But they will provide receipts for materials, and so, it'll be a loan-to-grant for that $6,000.
Do they also have the ability to get the signage and the canopies that are out?
Yes, yes. And that would be separate...
Do they know that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Staff have met with the principals of El Paso, and they're aware of the sign-of-façade grant program.
Thank you.
Oh, Spring Sprouts, that's a program that Andrew Sargent came up with in our business incentive line item in operating budget. We have about $7,000 and some change, and Andrew came up with a concept to offer grants to existing businesses downtown. They're micro grants, $500 grants, competitive process. They have to explain in the application how the grant money is going to improve their business. It could be through marketing. It could be acquisition of computer. And it has to be something that wasn't already planned. And this is a good way for the city to support the existing businesses downtown, and to help them grow their business, and thus, the name of Spring Sprout.
And how much should we set aside for that?
About $7,000. And we are going to cap those amounts at $500 apiece.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Any other comments, Mr. City Administrator?
Just those two.
City Council comments. Mr. Brubaker?
No comments tonight.
Mr. Metzner?
No comments.
Ms. Nye?
Was able to go to the pre, before the theater on Thursday night. Glad that the sickness didn't hit me then. It hit me afterwards. But anyway, I was able to have a picture taken with Mr. Mendez, who was a very, very nice person. So, I hope everything did go well, because that's as far as I got.
It was an absolutely fabulous evening, and I think he was surprised by the award that was named after him.
He seemed to be a very humble man.
Perpetually a part of the Maryland International Film Festival, the Tony Mendez Award, as it's called, so. Quite an honor and a privilege to be a part of that myself. Mr. Alshar?
Couple of things. First is, I see that we now have a copy of the Ripken Report. It's available for public consumption. It's a good thing. The second is, I would just reiterate comments from my wife, who attended the Maryland Theater event, VARGO, with me last week, and I thought her comments were spot-on. Afterwards, she said, you know, we didn't need Ben Affleck to have a magical night in downtown. The real hero was already in the room. So, I thought that was well said. And then, the last item that I have is in relation to the concern that I expressed for the outstanding water and sewer and electric bills that we have. And I still just am completely frustrated over that issue. I do plan to put something forward to mayor and council to consider, a more pointed approach to disconnection and collection. And one of the things I had thought about after the meeting was, you know, our water and sewer bills also include our trash fee. And if folks are behind $2.5 million on water and sewer bills, I would assume that means we're also not charging certain folks for their trash. And if I do the math, it's about a half million dollars. So, between the electric utility bills being $2.8 million of outstanding debt, $2.4 million in water and sewer, and, you know, about a half million dollars in trash, and I don't know who's paying the bay restoration fee at this point for those accounts and arrears, but I assume we've got to pay that as well, you know, you're talking anywhere from $5.5 to $6 million. 30% of your accounts in one area, and 20% in another. And I will not, I will not support a budget that increases the water and sewer rates on our paying customer base, which makes up a fraction of what we're carrying in our outstanding collections on the non-paying customer base.
Look forward to that proposal. Mr. Munson?
Kristen's absolutely right. We could find a million, even a million dollars of that money. That would help us a lot. I just want to say that, and I'm speaking for the entire city government, I think that our hearts go out to Boston, the people of Boston, and the people who were engaged in that race and got injured in particular. As representatives of municipality, we can certainly understand what they're going through as much as anybody else can. Thank you.
I'd like to echo those sentiments, and I have no comments other than to say that the Ripken Report is out. Looking forward to next week's discussion on a couple of these big items and furthering that conversation. So, with that, we will adjourn. Thank you.